Here, Trump Lewis.
Here.
Here.
And so.
Here.
Megan Warner. Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Here.
Kevin Doubleless.
Here. All right. Ryan, you're up.
You're on.
You're on.
Started off last Friday, we hosted a very successful Relay for Life volleyball tournament benefiting cancer research. We raised over fourteen hundred dollars and it was a great cause. Team Eight Maids of Milking were the overall champions tonight. There were fourteen teams that participated, including three staff teams. A great time was had by all. Auditions were held and rehearsal have begun for the school musical SpongeBob the Musical. Our Honor Society has announced its offices. Congratulations to President Kylie Masterson, Vice President Bodie Dunn, and Secretary Julia Voorhees. Also, our National Honor Society opened up here tutoring during lunch on October third. Our sports teams had a very successful fall season. We had many postseason awards. Starting off with boys soccer, for the first team, we have Manny Arias, Patrick Colthee, and Kyle Ingersoll. Second team, we have Eddie Lovardo, Aaron Parisi, and Alex Tramano, and with an honorable mention of Connor Keys. For girls soccer, we have first team Eve Dirk Newman, second team Julia Voorhees, and with an honorable mention of Kathleen Keys. Cross country, honorable mentions, Jack Edwards and Lucy Reed. Winter sports have finally begun. Middle school, boys and girls basketball will begin November seventh, and their first game will be held December second. High school, boys and girls basketball began November twenty first, and their first game will be December seventeenth. High school wrestling, second year started a JV program, and that began November twenty first. The high school, boys and girls basketball teams will be holding a free basketball clinic for LBA basketball players, grades three to six, on December tenth. There will be a new winter dance team for high school, boys and girls. The team is open to anyone, no matter the skill level. Dancers will perform at halftime of high school varsity basketball games.
All right, thank you very much.
I just wanted to reiterate too, a big shout out to Mr. Skolka because he's the one who organized the volleyball. It was a blast. We had a team, an administrative team, right, that entered in as a tournament as well, and we were definitely feeling it on Saturday morning, not doubt about that. But it was, it was a lot of fun just to see so many kids involved. I'm hoping we can do more things like that.
Yeah.
It was great. It was an awesome Friday night. Anything else for Ryan?
All right, nice to have Ryan.
Thank you.
Moving on, PTO, PTA, and LAEF update. Anybody here from PTO that wants to give an update?
Hey guys, Jessica Hartigan, West Amwell PTO. I'm actually going to read LPS's update first, if you don't, if you don't mind Steph send it to me. So the PTA report, the PTA sponsored an Eyes of the Wild Assembly on the day before Thanksgiving, which was a lot of fun for students and teachers. They're launching a toy drive this week in collaboration with Fisherman's Mark. Donations will be, donation boxes will be set up at Shive, Union Coffee, Live in Charlie's, Lamperville Academy, LPS, and West Amwell School. Toys will be collected up until twelve twenty. The sixth grade fundraising team is raffling off an iPhone fourteen Pro. Tickets are twenty dollars. Flyers are circulating with more information. Contact LPSPTA2@gmail.com with any questions. The drawing will be held at the Holiday Concert on December fourteenth. And that's all for the PTA. And then for the PTO, our holiday shop is coming up next week, December fifth through the ninth. Students send in money ahead of time, they have a checklist, and they can shop for family members for the holiday. This Friday, we have a hot cocoa and pajama party coming up. It's this Friday from six thirty to nine. Kids can be signed up on MTK. It's twenty dollars per student and twenty-five at the door. Admission includes pizza, hot cocoa, snack, crafts, and a drink. It's super fun. Last time, I think we had like fifty-eight kids. They play games, they do TikTok challenges, they watch short movies. Think we have more fun than they do sometimes. But, and then we just had a book drive and it was really successful. It was a win-win for everyone. People got to purge their bookshelves and our teachers got to stock their classroom libraries. We had leftover books and the PTA or PTO bought a bookshelf that will be a new book nook so students can come and exchange books. And we don't have a member meeting in December. We like to give our members a break around the holidays. We have a parents-only paint night coming up December fifteenth at Paint Party Farm. People can sign up on MTK. It's, they have like gnomes and all kinds of super fun things, and parents can bring an adult beverage and kind of hang out and let off some steam. And our sixth graders just ended their fundraiser with Fulpers and their clothing drive, so they're right on track for raising a lot of money. And we're still have our box tops contest going and that the winners will be announced in June. I think the third grade is still winning, but scan your receipts. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Wait for LAEF. All right, correspondents, do we have any?
One. Yeah, it's a task.
One, in fact. Do you want to give an LAEF update?
I can't.
You don't have to, I guess you won't get. I already called for it, I just wanted to give you a chance if you weren't here to do that or whatever.
Well, actually, I do want to say something. So I'm Matt Larkin, I live in Lambeville, LAEF. So we had another successful golf day. Really want to get some grants in. And what I was kind of thinking was to encourage the staff, think about what's going on in the next year in transition and things they're going to need. And now's a good time, especially in the elementary, look through things you want to get rid of. So the auction moved one week. Kevin probably already knows it's going to be April first. Other than that, we're looking for grants.
You. All right, approval of the minutes.
I'll have to do approval of the minutes.
On those in favor?
Aye.
Can you pose your standing?
All right, so welcome, everyone. Hopefully, you had a nice Thanksgiving holiday. We have, I have two things to share this evening. First, I'm going to be doing our annual Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment. And then we will have a separate public comment just for this information I'm going to share. And then I'll be doing an update as well on some other topics. So let me just kind of give some background. This is something we do annually each year at this time of the year. It's required by the New Jersey Department of Education. And basically, it's a self-assessment where the district evaluates and each building's self-assessed to see how we're following the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. And it's really an opportunity for us to kind of look at what we're doing well, areas of focus moving forward as far as any intervention, you know, programs or policies and practices. And hopefully, the community is aware, you know, there were some changes to the act this year that I had sent out a couple of weeks ago, just kind of some highlights in reference to that. Just a few things. How this process works, there's different elements. There's eight different core elements to each team in each building. So each team or each building has what's called a school climate team, and that school climate team meets throughout the year, and they will actually complete the process of performing this self-assessment. And basically, the key that they utilize, the scoring range is from a zero to a three, where you can see, you know, what each value represents. The first core element that they take a look at is really HIB programs, approaches, and initiatives. And there's some criteria here that are listed A through E. You know, making sure that we have established HIB programs. We implement those programs and we assess those programs. And then school-wide approaches as well to those initiatives. And then, you know, identifying any patterns or information that we would want to look at as far as our programming. So that's the first core element that was assessed by each one of our schools. Then we get into training. So obviously, training requirements. So anyone that works in our schools, even if they're not a teacher in our building, but let's say they coach, but, you know, during the day, maybe perhaps they have a different job and they're not in education. There is a requirement that all those individuals that are in our buildings go through training on the HIB law. Basically, that policy and the law focuses on educating on protective categories that are, you know, really announced in the ABR and making sure that folks understand what that's all about or any other distinguishing characteristics that can fall within the HIB law. And then if the HIB policy was discussed with students, which we do each and every year at the beginning of the year in a variety of different ways in each one of our buildings. And then for our staff, there are requirements. Each teaching staff member is required to do at least two hours of suicide prevention every five years, and we keep track of that. We have two hours also of HIB instruction on HIB prevention. So our teachers are required to do that within that five-year professional development cycle. And then the anti-bullying specialists, so we have in each one of our buildings, and it's listed on our website right under anti-bullying. If you look it down under the quick links, it will show you who that individual is for each one of our buildings. So it's important that we provide time during the school day for anything that they have to do related to HIB. I mentioned it already about the school safety and climate teams. And then it's important for our administration to receive training from myself, who is the district coordinator for HIB, and then also make them aware of changes. For example, I mentioned about some changes to the law during the summer. And then core element four deals with our curriculum instruction. So what we want to try to do is embed, you know, the highlights of harassment, intimidation, bullying law into some of our curriculum. A lot of times, it will fall in components of our health curriculum. So that's a piece. And then for letter B, the state of New Jersey has what's called a week of respect. It's always the first week in October every year. So we do a variety of different activities at each school level. Could be announcements, posters, things during the lunch periods, whatever it may be, to encourage our students, you know. And it's not something we should just do for one week. We should be doing that all the time. But that is recognized by the state of New Jersey and is a requirement for us to do. Core element five talks about HIB personnel. So we appoint every year on our board agenda, typically in our August meeting, who our anti-bullying specialists are going to be. What that means is those are the individuals that if a bullying report is filed, they actually conduct the investigation. It's their process to oversee. It's not the school principal. They're not allowed, honestly, to be involved in that process. Typically, it falls to a counselor. And then we have some of our child study folks who get involved with that from time to time as well. The ABS meet at least twice a year with me, which we do. We actually meet more than that, typically three times a year in the fall, winter, and the spring. That's an opportunity for me to provide updates on different things that are going on, to look at our programming, as well as oftentimes, we'll look at case scenarios and work through them as a team of how it would play out in reference to the criteria that's established by the HIB law and whether or not it would be classified as a HIB or perhaps just, you know, a discipline issue that needs to be handled, but doesn't fall under the realm of HIV. And then school-level incident reporting. So making sure that all of our procedures are followed as far as, you know, the required elements and reporting procedures. So, and as we get into element seven as well, you know, on our website, as I mentioned before, where the HIB can be found, there's information about reporting procedures. There's forms on there. There were changes this year. There are now new forms. Before, the districts were always responsible for creating their HIB forms. Now, there is a universal form by the Department of Education that went out, one that's used specifically if a staff, staff members referring an incident, and then another separate form that comes from a parent or guardian. So that is new. Notification to parents for offenders and victims. So we're required, when an incident does occur, the principal will reach out and let parents know that there is an incident. Obviously, the principal will not be involved in investigating that incident. Eventually, the HIB specialist will follow up with the parents and let them know the outcome of that investigation. But there needs to be an initial notification. And now, the new law, we have to document that notification. Investigations must be completed within ten school days with a written incident report. And then basically, in that report will be the findings of whether or not that typical behavior met the criteria of the HIB law and how that was handled. And then that has to be provided to me within two school days, once that report is finalized. And then eventually, that report is reviewed by the Board of Education in executive session. And then finally, for core element eight, just making sure that our staff are following all the procedures, understand that, you know, if they hear something, something reported, they are required to report it, put it in writing on the form that's been dedicated, you know, dedicated to them specifically to use for these types of things. And, and then finally, the last piece is the results from the self-assessment need to be posted on our district website. So what happens is we provide this information to the DOE, and then they will eventually provide us with a document that basically lists out what our scores are for each one of our schools and then gives an average score for the district. And we have to put that on our website, which if you go and look now, you'll see the last several years are there. A score of a fifty indicates that we're meeting all of our state requirements. They do figure out a district score by simply just taking the three scores from the three schools and coming up with the average, which for our district is a seventy-two. And then if you're interested, if you click on this link, and I'll make this available to the community, it's onboard doc, you can access it right now. But I'll send it out tomorrow as well with my update. This kind of gives you the background, the key thing on there about the HIB law, as well as some of the recent changes that I had mentioned earlier in the presentation. Then it's always a good time to talk about, like, what do we have in place to address these issues? So hopefully, if folks have been around long enough, you know that our mantra here has been educating the entire child or the whole child. So things, district goal every year since I've been here and even before me, has been on social emotional learning and focusing on, you know, developing the whole child. We put a lot of time, effort, and resources into mindfulness, conscious discipline training, and also crisis prevention intervention for our staff. I had mentioned this in the past, but we did something that not many school districts in the state of New Jersey have done, where we trained all of our staff back in August. They'd work with students ages twelve to eighteen in youth mental health first aid. And then we're actually going to be training our students in the spring in tenth and eleventh grade, and that will become an annual thing. Where we're going to actually have a few of our staff members that will be lead trainers and facilitate that training on an annual basis. And that is not something that's happening in a lot of places. Counselors, so we're fortunate. Couple of years ago, we did some redistributing of counselors and making sure that we have enough, especially here at our middle school, high school. We're fortunate to have a student assistance counselor, our anti-bullying specialist. And I've mentioned before, but we put a strong emphasis on restorative practices in the district over the last several years. So if there is an issue, it's not just about punitive, right? It's really about how can we educate the student, number one, on the law, and number two, on decision-making, to hopefully avoid a situation like that in the future. So that's been a big part of how we've handled this situation. We've rolled out Hundred and Safe Schools Act to our students. We continue to remind them periodically. I'll send out information to our students about that. And then we have our Children's First Mental Health Clinician this year, which is going very, very well and has a caseload of students providing support. And then I mentioned about the week of respect. And then there's also a week of violence and vandalism awareness, which is always the third week in October. So a lot of different things, a lot of different moving parts. Always something that we're continuing to evaluate to see trends and patterns and how we can do things better. So before we open up public comments specifically for this, I'll ask the board if there's any questions about the report.
Well, just a general question, you know, give me an example, because I mean, you see the meets all requirements and exceeds all requirements. What would be one of the examples where a school has gone to exceed the requirement?
So really, like going above and beyond. So for example, our school climate team could meet three or four times throughout the year instead of two. You know, they could do really an in-depth data, you know, kind of analysis depending upon the number of HIBs, things along those lines. All right, so we need to have a public comment just related to this report.
I'll read that first and then we'll open it up. Open a public comment of just this HIB report. We have procedures and requirements that include standard conduct and need to be followed by the members of the public during public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged with running a public meeting shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result from being prohibited from speaking during the public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors such as the non-necessary limited to shouting, interruption, and use of profanity or comments seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Members of the public are invited to address the board on this matter only for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to take your name and responsibility, public comment, and now for the HIB report. Anybody have any statements? All right. That public comment, you'll have two more after we give us the update, right?
Yep, so I have a few different things to update you on. Let me get started. So first, as I transitioned into the district and reoccurring throughout that, one of the pain points that I heard from teaching staff, parents, community members was Aspen. All right, so that is our student information system. We've had it for several years now, and there's been some challenges, just user-friendliness, accessing information, those types of things. So with that in mind, we, last year, mid-year, we took on taking a look at Aspen specifically, surveyed staff just to get some more feedback, and then put together a district-wide committee to really take a look at different vendors and systems that are out there that may better meet our needs. So the committee, which was made up of teachers and administrators, began in January two thousand twenty-two, evaluating several different options. And specifically, came up with an option and a recommendation that we replace Aspen with a new system that's called Encourse starting in the two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four school year. So the committee basically looked at three different vendors. We looked at Encourse, we looked at Power School, and we looked at Genesis. And they're all pretty, you know, three big companies in this field. The district before Aspen had a system called Realtime. So that was something that kind of already had been utilized, embedded out. And really, you know, the reason why Encourse was selected was for the filing. First of all, much more user-friendly compared to Aspen. Just the overall interface, you know, a lot better. It really can be used as an educational tool rather than just being used kind of that we're doing Aspen right now, storing data. That's pretty much it. And as we get into this more, I'll share more information about how that can happen. The parent portal was much more easy to navigate, all one place. So what I've heard from parents along the way was, you know, I have to go to Aspen for some things, but then I go to Google Classroom for other things, and every teacher has their own Google Classroom, or perhaps they're using CSOL or whatever it may be, and then I'm trying to keep track of like, if my child has five or six or seven different teachers, all this information, it gets to be overwhelming, let alone overwhelming for my child trying to manage all that. So the goal will be, it will be the one place where everything will be and parents will go, whether it's to get information about grades, schedules, attendance, forms. Everything is going to be in that one parent portal place and assignments and homework eventually. So the plan will be is that the parent portal and access to Encourse will be introduced to parents over the summer of twenty-three. And there's going to be a lot of short video tutorials and a lot of support for parents. You know, some of the information that I had heard was that Aspen wasn't the greatest rollout, the last go-around from the parent side and from the student side and from the staff side. So this is something that we'll take very, very seriously and be able to support and do a lot of hand-holding with parents to make sure that they have access to the system, they know how to navigate the system, they know how to set up. There's a lot of individualization in the system for parents based on what you want and how much you want to be notified when things are happening. And we'll kind of share all that information. So I will be getting into more specifics of how we'll be utilizing this in the coming months. There is an extensive training plan that we'll have with our staff, and this will be implemented over the period of the next three years. It's not something, because of all the different tools we'll be using within the system, that we're going to be able to do in one year because it's a big undertaking. So we will phase it in, starting with twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the next two years, other components will be introduced. So I just wanted to kind of formally announce that and put it on everyone's radar. I'm going to be meeting with our teaching staff in the next two weeks as part of our faculty meeting and providing much more detailed information on what this rollout is going to look like as far as training and support for our staff. So that was the first thing that I really wanted to kind of introduce and let everybody know that, you know, Aspen will be going by the wayside. I don't hear anybody complaining, so.
Can I ask a question about that? So just with respect to the rollout and the use, right? And I realize it's not all going to happen all at once on day one, which is really important. It's got a lot of capabilities to it, which will be rolled in and not, you know, flipped on as like a light switch. But in terms of consistency of use across the schools, elementary, middle school, high school, the expectation would be everyone's using it as their,
Correct.
whatever it's being used for at that time.
Correct. Yep, and we actually are going to have written expectations that we'll share with our staff as far as what that looks like. All right, so that is that. Now I want to provide an update on our school construction project. So we have received NJ DOE approval for both projects, which is a good thing. The only thing we're waiting on now is New Jersey Department of Consumer Affairs approval, because they have to approve as well. The way that works is there's about five different components to that, and there's a different individual for each one of the components. For example, plumbing, mechanical, HVAC. Right now, we have two out of the five approved, and we're waiting on the other three. Now, the good news with that is it's not at the bottom of the pile somewhere and they're actually looking at it. Because keep in mind, this was submitted in the end of July. Now we're just getting to it towards the end of November. So the hope is they're moving, you know, towards getting ready to approve that. As soon as we have DCA approval, we will put both projects out to bid at the same time for a period of three to four weeks with the hope of awarding the bid. And that means coming to the board and the board actually accepting and approving the bid at some point in January. We anticipate that we will have two different contractors involved in this process. We do not anticipate we will have the same contractor who will be bidding on both jobs. We'll probably have one contractor that will bid on the pre-K four building and a separate contractor that more than likely will bid on the five-eight building. At our next meeting in December, for full transparency with this process, I'm going to share some background information on what exactly you need to have in order to bid for a school project. It's not something where any contractor kind of off the street just comes in and says, I want to take on this job. There's a whole process, and I'm going to kind of spell that out just so everybody knows what that looks like. On our agenda tonight, there is an approval for us to award construction management services for both projects. So what does that mean? So this obviously is a very detailed project. It's extremely important that we have someone on-site five days a week that's managing the contractors, right? Making sure that we're getting what we're supposed to be getting, making sure that there's enough workers on the job site, making sure that we're hitting all our timelines, making sure that all the items that were supposed to be ordered are ordered and are on-site, whether it's, you know, furniture, HVAC, whatever it may be. That is a very extensive process. So we need to have someone on-site doing that and basically running construction meetings, which Andrew and I will participate in every two weeks with the contractor with all of our timelines and checkpoints. Here's where we are. We're ahead of schedule, we're on schedule, we're behind schedule. If we're behind schedule, how are you going to make it up so you're on schedule? What is that going to look like? You're going to be bringing people in after hours on the weekends. How are we going to make sure that this is done in a timely manner for, you know, August of two thousand twenty-four? So what we wound up doing is we put out an RFP, right, a request for proposal, and we looked at different construction management firms to bid on to be this individual. And in full transparency, this is what we came up with, and this again will be in my update that I send out tomorrow. So hopefully, you can see that. But it's not a cheap process, right? So basically, what you're looking at is this is for an individual to be on-site to manage this for eighteen months, all right, day in and day out from start to finish. So these are all the different companies that put in an RFP, a proposal, for what that would call. that would cost for that 18-month period. We also asked USA Architect, who is our architect, do you have someone in-house that you could put on-site to manage this process, and if so, how much would it cost? You can see the differences. There is an advantage of going in-house with your architect because obviously we're working with that individual, and pricing-wise, it's much more financially, fiscally responsible than it was going with some of the other folks that really bid on the proposal. So we have decided to go with Josh that I had mentioned on my last slide from USA Architects. Josh has over 12 years of experience, the last five working for USA Architects, and then 15 years before that managing other construction projects. Another nice thing about Josh is he lives in East Anwell, where some of these other companies are all over the state of New Jersey. So your construction manager could live an hour and a half away, right? The fact that he's right around the corner, can be on-site in five minutes, you know, can stop by on a weekend to see what's going, whatever it may be, is a huge advantage. So we're very confident that we're landing in a good place. The goal would be to recommend to the board this evening to approve that individual and that contract, and then as soon as the bid process, we go through it, Josh is on-site, making sure from day one that we're doing everything we need to do, and the contractor is staying in line. Not that they won't, I'm going to give them the benefit of the doubt, but having done this before, unfortunately, that doesn't always happen, right? And it's a constant game of accountability that goes on for 18 months. So this is a really important step this evening, to have someone on that we trust, someone on that has the best interest of the district as their primary focus to manage this project, and then we will find a spot for him on-site and he'll be with us, and literally each and every day be going back and forth, you know, between the 5-8 building and the pre-K4 building. Obviously, in the beginning, you know, starting with the, you know, 5-8 building because that will probably start as soon as the end of January, and then, you know, the pre-K4 building as we get into next summer. But that's a really important process. So I just wanted to share that with the community. All right, so this is a really important process. We have come to the point where we need to name these buildings, right? We're not just going to call it the pre-K4 and the 5-8 building. So we've been working as part of our board commu-, uh, school and community committee on developing a process of what that's going to look like, and community engagement is really, really important. So I'm going to kind of kick this off, spell out what it's going to be looking like, and then share how this is going to be released to the community for input. So first off, our goal is really by, hopefully, the end of February, to come back to you with some names, a name for the pre-K4 and a name for the 5-8 building. The district's going to be utilizing and sending out a Google form to accept name recommendations from community members and staff members for the pre-K4 and the 5-8 schools, and we've established specific criteria for that that we're going to ask folks to follow, which I'll share in a second. I'm going to put it out through school messenger, district social media, so our Facebook and Twitter. I'm going to have it in Lambertville Matters, which goes out right to all the community in Lambertville that, you know, does even kids or parents or families that live in the community that don't have kids in the school. I'll ask to put it on the West Anwell Community Facebook page, anything in Stockton that we can get out there on Facebook pages. We want to get as much interest as we can for folks to share their ideas and what their thoughts are. The criteria that we're looking at is we're really looking for names that would be representative of the environment or the setting where the schools will be located. We're not looking to name it after a person, we're not looking to name it after a municipality, all right, for obvious reasons, regionalization, it's about coming together. So we really want people to think about, based on where these schools are located. And in the Google form, for folks that maybe haven't been following along, I explain, you know, the specifics. So obviously, pre-K4 building is going to be now the current LPS, and I explain how the 5-8 building is going to be where it's going to be located right next to us. So for folks that maybe weren't following, obviously, they can kind of visualize that. And then the goal will be really to start brainstorming and thinking about some ideas based on this criteria. With that, once we get all that information, our district administrative team's going to review the entire list of names and try to narrow it down to five names for the pre-K4 building and five names for the 5-8 building, using the criteria that we established and also looking at our overall, you know, vision and mission statement for the district. And then we're going to put those five names to the kids. We're going to take the five names for pre-K4 and the five names for 5-8, we're going to put them out to our students, and we're going to say, vote for your favorite name. And our goal will be to narrow it down then from there from five to two. So the two top names for pre-K4, the two top names for 5-8, and then I'm going to bring them back to the board and say, here you go, and then the board's going to make a final decision. And then from there, we're really going to look at the branding, so, and the kids will definitely play a role with this, looking at logos and mascots, and then we get into branding materials, you know, colors, those final pieces. We still have time for that, but I think the names are an important part, so we can build off of that and eventually finalize colors and mascots and all that information that we'll need, obviously, to open up our buildings. So for a timeline, we're going to open this up tomorrow up to winter break, and really, so anyone you know, you can spread it from PTO, PTA, LEF, the Google form that I send out, and I'll keep reminding, if folks have ideas, you know, fill out the form, it's very simple, three questions. What do you think for a name for the pre-K4? What do you think for a name for the 5-8? Or anything else you want to share about the naming process? And we'll collect as much information we can. The admin team then will take that and from the 24th through the 13th, review that information, looking at our criteria and narrowing it down to five for each building. Then I'm looking at probably the week of January 16th, we'll do a huge, big promo with our students, you know, about voting and getting a lot as much student impact and input. And then I'm hoping that the board will announce the final selections at our February 27th Board of Education meeting. And then from there, you know, we'll focus the next several months on mascots, colors, and hopefully by the end of April, May, we're in a pretty good place for all that information. And then, you know, if all goes well, open house ribbon-cutting in August of 2024. So it's an exciting time for this. Again, community engagement's important from all stakeholders, so anything you can do to spread the word, I'll probably be sending out text messages to get that out there, and I'm sure we'll come up with some really creative things from our community, and then from there move forward and eventually be able to put names to each one of our buildings. Any questions from the board on any of the three things that I presented?
A question, sorry. Where are we with the talks with the Jesus School in Lambertville and the transition to that? Is that, where does that fall here?
We're in a very good place. We just met today. We did another about an hour and a half to two-hour visit last Tuesday before Thanksgiving with myself, Andrew, Wanda, principal at LPS, Massios, our food service came and looked at the kitchen area, Vince came and looked at all of our technology needs as well as several of our maintenance folks, just to start taking a look at facilities, boilers, all that kind of stuff. We are in a really good place. We have finalized basically what space we're going to use. We met with Father and their architect, he was part of that process, Father Robert. So we finalized that on Tuesday. We met today and debriefed that visit, and we have a pretty extensive spreadsheet of all the different things that we're going to need to do from now until then to get everything ready. I'm going to be sharing a plan with staff when I meet with them, specifically the LPS staff, next Tuesday, of kind of laying out what the next six months are going to look like with the move. The only thing we're waiting on now that we finalized the space is we will receive a lease from the Diocese of Matouchin, and obviously, our board attorney will review that lease, and my goal is to hopefully bring that lease to the board in January to approve. So I'm excited. I think, you know, we're in a really good place. We have another follow-up meeting scheduled for early January, right after winter break. Mr. Harris, anything more you need to add from your perspective?
No, I promise.
So we're in good shape.
Excellent, great.
Yeah, we're in good shape.
...for the naming of the schools, and just throwing it out there, but is there a way to involve the kids earlier in the process, like not just voting on the top choices, but maybe actually coming up with names?
That could be a pro and a con, depending upon what...
Like my, just the thought, yeah. But like each class was maybe had to come up with a name to submit. I mean, I get it, it could be a lot of names thrown out there, but just maybe it's going to be their schools.
Well, I know we talked about possibly throwing out supports that you brought up, Diana, about possibly involving the kids more with the contest with the mascot and things like that and the colors, maybe like a symbol, you know, where we have some kids and all that stuff, do maybe something like that, just a thought out there too. And then that was a thought I had.
Yeah, they would design that, they could literally design the logo and the...
The logo and the mascot and everything, you know, that they'd go over a little bit better. I'm good with anything, but that was something that tied along them more in this process.
Would the kids be able to fill out the book line?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, fill in their parents'.
Yep. No, 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 absolutely. All right.
All right, we are going to open up public comment for all agenda items and any shouts. Public comment is now open. Second main statement, please follow up, come on up. Remember three-minute time limit and state your name and me to spell.
Hi, Jen Bachelor of West Anwell. I just wanted to come tonight to, I came across an old Spiritware shirt for West Anwell School over the weekend, and I noticed that it said, like Wildcats established or since 1952, and that, I did some math and figured that this would be our 70th school year this year for 2022 for West Anwell School. And while the building may be coming to the end of its useful life, I think that's a pretty big milestone to make it 70 years a Wildcat. And I was hoping just to kind of raise that awareness that maybe we could commemorate that at some point in the year between PTO, LEF, and the board. And I also wanted to just mention that I know the PTO is doing a fundraising for the scholarship fund so that we can continue to have Wild, you know, the remaining Wildcats take advantage of that. So I don't know if there's, you know, something that could be done to work in conjunction, but it might just be a nice way to kind of cap the end of West Anwell School. And also just to, just while I'm thinking of it, tomorrow's Giving Tuesday, so if anybody wants to donate to the PTO efforts for the scholarship fund, it would be a good day to do it tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, I was not aware of that. I don't know if Mr. Miller is either, so we'll discuss that tomorrow.
Anybody else? All right, sound good, Ryan? Sure.
Hi, my name is Matt Larkin. I live in Lambertville, I have two kids in the high school. So two things, one, when you were talking about the HIP report, one of the things I wanted to raise awareness of was last year, actually, one of the staff made a comment to us about how our son was being kind of not treated nicely by one of the, you know, attendants like in the cafeteria or something like that. So just to be aware that it could kind of come from a peer or, you know, often from someone in authority who may not even be aware that it could be bullying. And it was about, it was about wearing his hoodie in the school building, so. Anyway, I just wanted to raise that because that occurred to me. And I love the idea that you have here about, you know, the community naming things, I think that's going to be really good, and I love that idea about the 70th year of West Anwell. That's really kind of interesting. So those are my comments, and again, I say thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, close down that public per comment, we'll have one more at the end. No new correspondence?
No. Yeah, if you need to go, Ryan? Are you enjoying yourself too much?
Before we get to the boring stuff, do you have...
Your call.
Yeah. He won't take it personally.
With you signing up for the rest of me, I know you need your sleep and rest and make sure the grade's good, so we appreciate you being here.
This might be the first meeting that Ryan can actually drive himself home.
That's right, wow. Second one, yeah. Be careful. Thank you.
Remember, part of advice, deer always travel in packs. You see one, go really slow. Never assume that that one ran across the road or ain't one or more right behind it. All right, moving on to our agenda, going to draft a presentation by a safety committee. Diana?
So we went to, about to, around the 17th. Some of the highlights, last month, we talked about the lighting upgrade demo that was done in one of the classrooms, one of the high school classrooms. So we did see that it made a difference, and we received a quote to upgrade the whole building, I think it's middle school and high school. The full cost is around $80,000 for that upgrade, but we would qualify for about $16,000 in rebates, and in the long run, we would see approximately $11,000 annually in savings. So in the long run, it is something that could potentially pay for itself. Stockton update was a big one, it's been a long time coming, so we finally heard from all the potential claimants on the deed who may have had a claim for the building, so we're able to move forward to turn the building over to the borough of Stockton with a clean title. It's been a long process, but it was necessary to make sure that there's no hiccups, and so Stockton can actually can take ownership of the building without having any claimants lying out there. As far as capital projects, some updates, the pole barn was near completion two weeks ago, I'm not sure if that's changed, a little bit closer, okay. Auditorium updates are completed, classroom upgrades, those were close to sort of completion. School bus cameras have all been installed. So once the pole barn is done, then we have set out to do everything we planned for this year with a little bit of money left over for possible classroom furniture upgrades. We talked about the budget for '23, '24. Andrew has met with all the department heads to start prepping, and we hope to have a preliminary budget ready in December for review. We're going to be reviewing or approving the 2023 meeting dates, but I just heard we may be moving the November meeting a little bit earlier to avoid Thanksgiving break, so that's on the agenda. Also talked about projected pre-K enrollment for '23, '24. I think we're up to about 60 students, so we're working on coming up with a fourth pre-K classroom, rookie material preschools for that, some more to come. You'll see there's going to be an approval for maintenance reserve withdrawal, and that is for plumbing repairs, HVAC repairs, and high school gym scoreboard repairs. We are approving the acceptance of the NJ6 Safety and Security Grant. We've already received the money, but we have to officially approve it, and that's paid for the cybersecurity, safety training. And lastly, for transportation, I think now we're fully staffed with bus drivers, which is huge, and we are reviewing quotes to purchase a new bus, which is something that will be upcoming. I'd like to move item eight to both.
I'll second that. Anything else?
Two questions. The first one, the bus cameras. Have we noticed any, any feedback from the bus drivers in terms of making any difference for the...
We've used them.
Good. I was referring to the word to the safety of the people traveling this way when you were supposed to be stopped.
Oh, yeah.
I was actually not a person, but I'm...
We had an incident with someone who didn't stop when they were supposed to, and we were able to pick it up on the camera and...
Great, I know, I know, I'm 31, that's it. And then my, my second question with both, we're, but I'm saying, right, we see high school scoreboard repaired or the middle school? That was...
So we recently did middle school scoreboard repairs, and then this is additional suspension for the high school.
High school, okay. I was curious.
The middle school school board is at least 15 years old, the high school board is probably like 30 years old. It's...
It's now repaired though.
It's nearing the end of its life. At some point, that's going to happen, yep.
But it's now working.
But it's working, yeah. And we're working from the...
More my question.
Yep. Any other stuff? Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Good guy.
Yes.
Brian Pease?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace McCulley?
Yeah.
Brian Frisell?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomlin, now?
Yes.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'll do that. So in personnel, we went for, which we always do typically before the board meeting. Then a couple of other things I just wanted to point out, we've had students who've come forward expressing an interest in starting a winter dance team for our winter athletics. So we've embraced that and we're going to give it a shot. It'll start more kind of a trial meet a couple of times a week. I think they actually started today. I could hear them outside my office. So that will be something new that will be unique that we haven't done before that we're going to support. Something else I wanted to make mention of, we're going to start new. You're probably aware, and if you're not, there's a major teacher shortage right now across our country and in New Jersey specifically, significantly. And I think I gave out a stat recently where, you know, back in 2000, I think it was 910, we had about 6,500 students graduating from education programs in the state of New Jersey, ready to be certified to teach. And as of 2019, 20, so this is pre-COVID, that number's down to about 3,500 or 3,300. So half. And I'm assuming it's even less now. So that's an issue, right? So one of the things, I went recently to the College of New Jersey, met with them and some other superintendents in the area to talk about how we can attack this problem. And we are going to start in the district, something that's called an NJFDA, New Jersey Future Educators Association. We are going to embrace students who have an interest in education and starting as a club first with a teacher or two. And it's an organization where there's conferences throughout the year. They get to meet with other kids that are in it throughout the state of New Jersey. My goal would be eventually down the road, develop an in-house program where as part of their coursework, students could actually pair up with a teacher and work side by side with that teacher to get real hands-on experience and perhaps even receive some college credits. So that's probably a year or two down the road, but this is an initial that we're going to start pretty quickly. We have several staff members who are interested in facilitating and advising this. And it's really, you know, the theory of grow your own, right? So if we start locally and down the road, we have kids who come out of school and, you know, maybe we bring them back for jobs because that's an issue. And then the last thing I'll just mention quickly is, thank you for the many nominations received for Governor's Educator of the Year Award. We will be making those announcements within the week. Our committees at each one of our buildings have been meeting to go through our selection process. And by this time next week, probably all individuals will know who's been awarded that tremendous honor. And then we'll be bringing them to our Board of Education meeting later in the year to celebrate that. So just wanted to give an update on that.
Name B?
So mobile.
Second.
Any discussion on name B? Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Brian Frisell?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Ronnie Tugman now?
Yeah.
Kevin Kowal?
Yes.
Curriculum mention now.
Okay, the curriculum committee met on Thursday, November the 3rd in the library. We were treated to about a 35 minute presentation on the OnCourse system, which Tony mentioned in his superintendent's report. And so the gentleman who was giving that presentation sort of walked us through, showed us how the data can be manipulated. Tony's already covered it, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. I will just mention a couple of things. Unlike Aspen, which is our current system, which we've had for about seven years, which is provided by FALAT, which is a gigantic nationally known educational company, the OnCourse system has been developed by a company in New Jersey. So they are actually tied in with the New Jersey Department of Education in a way that Aspen is not. So when there are changes to standards, changes to, you know, any kind of recommendations from the department, they're on top of those things, again, in a way that Aspen is not. What we saw from the presentation is that we had hoped that Aspen would give us some ability to sort of manage student data and that we ultimately really didn't have the capability that we that we hoped that it might. This system seems to be more robust in the ability to track data that the teachers and administrators can use hopefully to improve student achievement. They can dig down into, you know, classes, assessments, you know, individual students and say, you know, hopefully work on strategies for improving education. So and as Tracy mentioned, we, when we do, you know, bring this up, we will be licensing, we'll be starting with just sort of a portion of it. We will be starting with the student information system, which includes the parent portal, and then we'll add other modules and other functions as needed. So that was a really interesting presentation. The committee also discussed the 18 hours for the family STEM nights, which we just approved under personnel. And the committee discussed and recommends for board approval, the curriculum, new curriculum for the visual and performing arts, that is for preschool through grade 12, written by our talented Ms. Shag, among other Ms. Prin, excuse me, among other, I'm so sorry, you know, other teachers here. So with that, a final, I will just mention one final thing. We got an update from Vince Sappelli, who is our technology guy, and they have been working with the architect to plan out how we're going to utilize technology in the new buildings. And so they have been interacting with the teachers, especially with, you know, music teachers, STEM teachers, you know, performing arts teachers to make sure that we are going to be, have great capabilities in the new buildings. So with that, I will just, I'll make a motion to approve item A. For a second.
All right, open for discussion. Any discussion on item A?
I actually just reminded me of something Tony mentioned before about OnCourse, and you touched on it, Jim, the idea of OnCourse being more than just a data storage platform, but it actually can be used as an educational tool. Are there those kinds of strategies and teaching strategies, what you're talking about there, or is that to go beyond? Okay, gotcha.
So really, you really want a system to be able to visualize all the data that's in it. Unfortunately, right now, that's not a capability of Aspen. So one of the nice things about OnCourse, it will visualize at all different granular level. The teachers will be able to really have access for, you know, benchmark data that we have now and different assessments that we give, as well as our state assessments, to really drill down and see all the way down to the standard where our students are performing well and then where we need support. Right now, we don't really have that capability without a lot of time and effort that has to go in to actually even get to that.
Okay. So like an educational tool for the teachers to know
And then the other piece of it, too, that's important is eventually OnCourse has a whole system to deliver content as well as, if you're familiar with like a canvas or something along those lines, you know, used at a college level, very similar capabilities of a learning management system.
Yeah.
So that's something that won't be year one, but as we get down the road, that will be something that we'll implement eventually.
Excellent. And again, this presentation, they showed, you know, he was showing us how they can, you know, basically with a touch of a button here, you know, and you can get all of this information and it's charts and graphs, and then you can dig into that even further. And it's broken down in all kinds of different ways, sliced up, you know, so it's much, it's considerably more powerful, I think, than what we currently have. And, you know, as you said, what we, what we have has been something with this point that has had functionality that I think when we first brought it in, that we hoped it would have.
I think that the visibility and the reporting capability, the natural reporting capability, not the need to kind of come up with your own analytics, there's some natural reporting capabilities that come with it that that really are powerful that we don't have today. So, you know, again, having to analyze it yourself or come up with your own, that's very difficult to do. And so this kind of presents the typical data. And then, of course, obviously, I'm sure there'll be input in terms of what we would traditionally want to use on a on a typical basis. But I love the idea of being able to see into the assessments and see where we're struggling, specific content areas that we're struggling on, and understand, okay, my class this year is having trouble with X, you know, whatever that is.
Right.
I think that's really powerful.
Yeah.
Not for, not day one, but it's the fact that it's the capability is there and we are planning to use that capability.
Right, right. Yeah. The visualization's out of the box are are really nice, I think. Is it possible that, I mean, we can also export the data if
Go ahead.
Did want to, you know, do our own analysis and everything, right? Okay. Lock in. Okay. Great.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin Kowal?
Yes, we did meet this evening. I have two, excuse me, one, no, two policies put forward for you were a first read. Just as a reminder to the board and to the public, first read is our opportunity to make changes to a policy that is now open. Now, that said, right, we are looking at with respect to non-represented employees, say, a document where we don't have, where we have employees with no contract. And this is kind of our way of establishing standards, which was presented to us and reviewed by by Carrie. So again, we're looking at that one. And then the other one is around public participation. So it's evolved over the years. And I think what we're just trying to do is make this more of an awareness in terms of what our typical operation is here with respect to, you know, we talked about the three minutes and things like that, but, you know, how how we can have the public participate and it be productive, not only for the public, but also for the board. So again, I'll reiterate this is a first read. Now is your chance to take a look at it, to make comments. You can provide those comments to me via my self hundred and email. So this is the comment. So I'm just going to kind of reiterate that because policies can be adjusted if needed, right, as long as it's within reason, right? But certainly that's the point of what we're presenting here in front of you. So please feel free to take a look at that first read and then we'll bring it forward for a second read in the next session. So I'm, two policies in letter A.
Oh, second. Definitely discussion. Andrew Rofel? Brian, Sean Lewis?
Yes.
Trace Petrucci?
Yeah.
Dana Frisell?
Yeah.
Sean Ellis?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yeah.
Brian Keys?
Yes.
Ronnie Tugman now?
Yes.
Kevin Kowal?
Yes.
Christian Carrick? Any need me, Brian?
All right, school and community, we discussed the school naming guidelines as presented by Tony tonight. We also continued our discussion on staff recruitment and retention. Tony talked about the drastic reduction of students that are going into the end of the field of education and how some colleges and universities are developing alternate pathways in order to improve things in the near future. But there's a lot of things that we need to be looking in a long range planning to improve that, to build that pipeline back. The program, just to expand upon what what Tony shared, there's the New Jersey Future Education Educators Association, which is a chapter within the New Jersey Education Educators Association. And so that's really exciting that we can start immediately. The Teachers of Tomorrow is the other program that you were talking about that would be an elective course that could potentially have dual credit. And again, Tony mentioned that that requires a lot of additional planning and partnership before we implement it. But it's important to note that that there aren't any other schools in the region that are providing that. So it's something that could potentially be a goal for our district. Staff retention continues to be a priority. Administrators are working to continue to expand on the practices, the support teachers. Tony conducts regular exit interviews to identify different patterns and also is meeting with new staff to get feedback on the onboarding process and how our district welcomes new staff. The transition planning, there's another tour at St. John's to really look at the infrastructure. Also, Tony's going to the upcoming staff meetings at each school to really talk to teachers to get, answer any questions and clear up any misconceptions. Because obviously a transition can be very stressful, and the more information people have, the better that will. And the last thing we talked about was best practices in fiduciary oversight. So the construction project is something that's a huge endeavor. And we really look at every aspect of the, every phase of the construction route, we really need to build transparency into our processes. So Tony's going to be explaining the bidding process at our next meeting and how there's very specific regulations around that. But in addition, we'll be implementing strategies that really do like, you know, very close oversight of all of the, the entire project with the, I'm forgetting the name of the position title, but
Construction manager.
Construction manager. But really, it's about overseeing the project so that there's, you know, we're always in compliance and that we're as efficient as we possibly can be. I did want to mention, you know, to remind folks that the school and community goal for this year was to increase communication with the public. And I think Tony's done a really good job of doing that through regular emails and the district newsletter and by issuing press releases. So people should expect to see a lot more of these because we continue to be focused on keeping the public informed throughout the process of construction. And that is it.
You have a few items of working information accepted to the management station bully report, which chooses out all the information on required drill, taking drills. If they need a motion.
Go on.
Second.
Sean, second.
Sean Ellis, second.
Oh, there are any discussion, any discussion on item A?
Just an observation, again, when Mr. Pugh gave his presentation, I'm sure everybody knows this at this point, but it, you know, for anybody that doesn't, just because something is not deemed to be a hit, can meet that criteria, which is narrow criteria, that is in state law, does not mean that if there is somebody who is behaving poorly, that there is not punishment and consequence. So I always feel like that needs to be said that when you, when, you know, oh, I, you know, there was a complaint and it was, and the board said it wasn't a hit, well, there's still maybe punishment if there was misbehavior.
Oh, that's that could be education and restored justice practices.
Some point.
And a learning opportunity.
A learning, sure.
All right. Any questions? On this table?
Hi.
All right, bring it to our second public comment. Second public comment is now open. If anybody wants to make statements, please state your name, Miss Spout.
I couldn't go two meetings without getting up here. Michael Strauss from West Hamwell. I just wanted to say, just call out a few things that I heard tonight that I really wanted to make sure had the extra exclamation point. First, the fact that we're fully staffed on bus drivers, congratulations. Like, I know that that's an accomplishment and that may have been missed. But also the replacement of Aspen. From the parent's side, thanks for the acknowledgement, too, that it is really hard to navigate. But I think hearing from what you're saying also goes on the parent's side of the more visible things are, and the more that we as parents can interpret the data, the better that we can be partners to the teachers. And it also allows us to go back to my, my son is part of that fifth grade that just had the dreadful, dreadful scores in the the state testing. And being able to see what's going to come out of that and and the application of those scores in his his future learning in a system would be really, really great. That said, I do have to call out, I saw a really great example of differentiated learning in my conference with Donna McKee. She really broke it down and told me exactly, you know, what she's been doing with Keen and what she's been doing with the entire class to kind of bring them up to speed. And it was really impressive to see in action. I also have to call out the grow your own. So going, that that's a great statement, not only at this level, but I've noticed that we've been bringing on more student teachers. If we are looking to staff our buildings in the future, that is a great strategy. So thank you for continuing to do that. And the other thing that I really also want to call out is the investment in the auditorium. We haven't done a lot of investment in the arts here. I think it's a growing program. I was lucky enough to go to the Music Mountain Theater the other day and I saw a lot of South Hundred and students and I saw a lot of South Hundredan students in that program in a Christmas carol. So, when you have the community also cross-linking, it just makes sense to keep growing. So, thank you for doing that. And then also, Ronnie's last point, the fiduciary oversight. We have a lot of very numbers-driven community members. So, seeing that slide tonight that you put up with all of the bids and where USA Architects came in, that's important information to get out there. So, thank you for sharing that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Matt Lark in Lambertville. One question I have on the OnCourse system, is that going to be bilingual for...
Yeah.
Well, okay. Good. Good. I'm really glad to hear that. And then the other thing I heard about the, there's going to be a dance club starting or something like that. Sounds like a great opportunity for a grant request. I just want to put that out there.
All right.
Yep. Write that down.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right. About two second public comment. We do have a need for executive session tonight. We will take no action when we come out. You have a motion, and we move into executive session?
Second.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Next thing. Ms. Carrick. Yeah. I know this is short. Right wing to the right. No, but someone has got such a... Yeah. You must say, say. You didn't need to.
Oh, you have felt us. Never. Really awesome.
All right, Mr. McCray, next one, please.